Okay, it's six o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and get started with the Hudsonville Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting for November 14th. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I have a motion to approve our agenda.
So move.
By Dawn.
Say yes.
By Greg. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Alright, first up on our agenda is the Teaching and Learning Feature.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Did you skip public count?
Oh, we didn't.
No, that's coming.
It's coming.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
I'm used to that coming, right? Sorry.
We'll get to you.
We want you to sit a little longer.
Go ahead.
So we have the opportunity this evening to hear from actually quite a few of our teachers who are doing some of the really powerful work around collaborative teams. As you may know, that falls under that umbrella of professional learning communities, so that's work that we've been doing in the district quite focused and have some core goals around for the past few years. This year, the teachers have an additional about thirty minutes, ends up being a little less than that, a couple times a month to really dive into this work. It's a focus on not only their professional learning, but also ensuring that we are responding to student learning in a timely manner. So I would welcome our whole group of teachers to join us at the podium and feel free to introduce yourself, administrators as well. Like I said, we have a whole group here that would like to kind of showcase some of the work that we've been doing this year.
Let's go first. I'll go first.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that's you. Come on up here.
I got this.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jordan Beal, the Principal of Hudsonville High School. I brought with me tonight Brandy Walker. She teaches Social Studies at the high school, World History, and she's the PLC Lead Teacher for that group of teachers. And so they have a really high-functioning team and they're kind of a model, I think, for other teams in the school, so I thought it would be a good group to share and hear how we're utilizing this time at the high school. So Brandy, thanks for being here. I'm gonna let you take it away.
Thank you for that compliment. I appreciate that. So, a little bit of background, when I was hired, this is my twenty-third year, when I was hired, our class at the time had just changed to be Global Studies. And Brad Prince and Eric Hune had worked to do some of the background work on the beginning of that course. So when I came in, the three of us worked to build the rest of the course because, you know, you all do so much ahead of time. Anyways, we kind of started our working relationship that way. We just didn't realize that maybe what we were doing was a PLC. So we've always had the opportunity to work together and we've been able to build a really strong team and kind of welcome people in as we've had to hire more people or bring on other staff depending on our course load. So to actually have time during the day to get some of those things done has been amazing. I was a little skeptical, like, well, do we need this time? Because we are very fortunate that we're very consistent, we're on the same page with what we do, with what we teach, our curriculum, our assessments, I mean even down to notes and quizzes. So I was like, well, you know, is, how's this gonna work? And it has just been such a blessing really to have that time, so I wanna thank you all for making that happen. But we've been able to integrate some primary source reading into our assessments that have SAT-style questions on them to try to help students by the time they're a junior maybe tackle some of those things on the SAT. That was not something we just, we shouldn't have time. We tried to build it into our class, but it wasn't as meaningful. Then we were able to also actually evaluate data. I mean, we would do it, but it was often at the end of a semester or end of a trimester when it wasn't as meaningful because it was like, okay, well, next time around, we'll try this. It wasn't like, hey, tomorrow, I'm gonna get this kid in for seminar, or, hey, next week, let's switch this up and add this new idea in. And it really has just been great. And I also have the privilege of being the Department Head for Social Studies. And at our last whole group meeting, I asked all of them to share out, like elevator pitch style, and every single person said it has been so positive, depending on where they're at as a team. Maybe it's coming together and becoming more common for students, maybe it's building in new assessments or new projects, but every single person, the only, only negative they said was, man, we'd love more time. Which, what do you do? It's a great place to start, though. So, thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Alright, I'm Matt Bear. I'm the Principal at Riley Street Middle School, so I have the opportunity to use our math department here. I think I'm the complete opposite of what Brandy just said. We actually have two relatively new teachers to this process. Sabrina Verda's been in our district for a couple of years now. It's kind of bounced around between ELA and then now, well, it's the sixth grade math. Julie Barman, this is her second year with us in math, although had nineteen years previously at West Ottawa. So where Brandy comes with this, like, world of experience, has a lot of people that those connections are there. We've had the experience with a young team who just needs more time. I guess we all said, what do we need more of it?
Time.
Time, cool. So I think, I think one of the gifts of teaching is, we have a lot of creative people, but they're asking for that ability to meet and collaborate more. And I think what we're gonna hit the head on the most is if we truly wanna get down, the work of a PLC as we've seen in Stevenson, as we've traveled to other places and seen this really work on a high scale, on a high-function level, is that there was a consistent time that we have for our teachers to meet, to talk about the curriculum they have coming up, to talk about the assessments they're creating, to take that assessments, decide who is doing what to which kids based on the results of those, and try to continue that model over and over again. So the fact that, as crazy as this idea sounded, I think when it was first presented, it's been instrumental to the work that we can do every single week with our kids. So when we ask questions, what do kids wanna know, and how do we know if they know it? We actually have time and space to answer what do we do if they do and what do we do if they don't. And so I'm gonna turn it over to our two amazing staff that handle this for Riley. Obviously, everyone does, but you're a nice man.
Hi, I'm Julie and this is Sabrina. We unfortunately do not have common planning this year, and so we've really coveted this time, this, how, what did I say? How consistent it is and how frequent it is, because otherwise, we're spending a lot of time outside of contractual time, planning and using some of those assessments and looking at our data. So, I guess one of our cons, our negatives, is we would love more time. Since we don't have time during the day regularly with common planning, the, every other-ish week that we get to meet is really important to us, to look at our student data so that we can work on our yearly goal. It's just actionable. It's right, right on the, um, sorry, um, what do I wanna say? Timely, just right on time, so, and we can make adjustments if needed.
Yeah, and just being able to, obviously, like we said, that's our one time that we are for sure that we're able to meet together, but just being able to really dive into the assessments and the assessments that we're about ready to give, reformulating the assessments to make it more application-based, not just what they're currently doing and being able to push them more outside of just the textbook that we're teaching. It's been really nice to bounce ideas off during that time.
Thanks. Thank you.
Alright, and then I brought with us our seventh-grade science team. A lot of the same things that we would echo that have been shared, but a team that really is led, in charge of our building, utilizing this time for the purpose of digging into the data and driving learning forward for our kids. So I'm gonna hand it over to them. They have prepared a few slides just to show you a little bit about what a meeting structure looks like.
So we do have the pleasure of having common planning together. So we've been able to use this PLC time to really focus on helping our students succeed in the practices that we think are most essential. Last year, we did some work with Josh Ray and we chose three main science skills that we want every seventh grader to be able to leave with. And what we've been focusing on so far this year is basically graphing and making sure students can make a graph, read a graph, and just use them correctly. So you'll see how we've made some achievements along that with the time we've been given for PLC.
Yeah, so we have been using this rubric, which is a common rubric that we actually use with Riley, too, which has been pretty sweet during these times when we're at our team time to deal with the same language and just kind of say, for me at least, like, hey, this kid's struggling with this interval, how do we do it? And we can really focus on what that looks like for remediating that kid or helping them out, and yeah, it's been really sweet. This is just a quick look on the rubric that we decided to go with.
And we thought we'd give you a little sample of some of the data that we've collected. And each teacher is shown here with sort of, you can see this color-coded, so it shows you where we started, there on the left, and as we get more towards the yellow and blue, you can see the kids starting to succeed a little bit more. And then we react to this by pulling kids who are lower into our advisory time to get a little extra help. Any questions?
All the questions are for you, JD.
Okay.
Is there something else here that you wanna share?
This is just sort of after we compiled everything. We showed you those percentages of the kids who are, have met expectation, have been proficient.
Well, I will speak on behalf of, from a district, at least from a central office standpoint. I know our administrators put a lot of work into oversight and support for our staff, but the work our staff has put in, you don't just create time and say, you got this, you guys have rolled up your sleeve and worked hard trying to support our kids, those that know it and those that don't. So it's just, it's fun to watch. Yes, there are some challenges we're working through from an organizational standpoint. I know you want more time. We are, we do have to keep our kids in the seats for a certain amount of time. But there are, we're looking at creative ways to continue to do this work because as our teachers are demonstrating through support from our administrators, it's great work. So thanks for all of you and for all the other, nearly two hundred other staff that are not here, you're all working hard. Thank you.
Thank you for all being here this evening.
Appreciate it. Great stuff. We will move on to the recognition of visitors. You're gonna keep the presence.
First is Joy Manos.
I just wanted to say how much I'm looking forward to working with all of you on the board except for Mr. Davis. I am humbled and grateful for the opportunity and I'm very thankful for those who voted for me, and I just can't wait to get to work in January.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Erin Dubey.
Sorry, you all threw me off at the new order, so apologies for that. But now, I'm sure you're all aware of the horribly racist text messages sent to people of color across our country and right here in West Michigan. This act was meant to terrorize, threatening them with kidnapping and slayna and death, all because of the color of their skin. It's bad, but it's not surprising, because I've been at these meetings for years now and I've witnessed people fighting against inclusive books, stonewalling diversity training, and getting up in arms over anything that they think could possibly acknowledge that there might be a problem. So we bury our heads in the sand. We drag our feet and we say, we'll handle this on a case-by-case basis because it's too divisive to tackle head-on. Well, here's a case, and why don't we ask the twelve-year-old who just got her life threatened how she feels about divisiveness right now? As if unity with bigotry is something worth striving for. That refusal to address this has left a white that the white supremacists are more than happy to fill and use to poison the minds of our young men, and men are they good at it? Because how do you think this happened? This was a nationally coordinated and distributed effort with resources and reach to pull this off with multiple messages across multiple accounts and multiple services. That means that most likely the people who collected the numbers and sent the messages were people who walked the halls with their victims. It's those same young men. And we don't even have time to get into the self-proclaimed Nazis marching in Michigan or a second grader respasting rape culture in second-grade classrooms. Our silence is creating that void. Our silence is our complicity. I'm sure hope that the absence of evidence in our district proves to be the evidence of absence, but don't be foolish enough to think for one second that just because somebody didn't directly receive the text, that they aren't affected by it. It's here in West Michigan. We are literally surrounded by it. So how many of our kids are now thinking, am I gonna be next on the list? Is he going to be the one that adds me? Why have my adults not said anything? Am I even safe here anymore? What do you think that does to a kid? Now, I pray to God that this is enough to finally have scales fall from our eyes, because if it's not, I'm terrified of what it'll actually take. It's like the old saying goes, all it takes for evil to triumph is people of goodwill to do nothing. So please, step up, be the leaders that these kids need you to be, and start tackling this wave of hatred head-on, because when we don't address it, the white supremacists do. Thank you.
Move on to the consent agenda. Time to review it. Does anybody have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Move. By Andrew.
Support.
By Dawn. Any questions, comments on it? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Move on to the regular action agenda here for the evening. First order up is the approval of the Special Education and Multilingual Courses.
Yeah, so I think that this actually brings us to the end of all of the courses to have us in compliance with our board policy for approval dates, if you will, from the board. So just as we discussed at our work session, these are our multilingual courses and our special education courses that I would provide, that I would request your approval of this session.
Great. I feel like one of my first meetings on this board was with that, so I thought it would never end.
I guess, yes.
Glad we worked our way through. Alright, the board's had time to review the current Special Education and Multilingual Courses as presented by Amy Taylor. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
By Dawn.
Second.
By Greg. Hey, we got a short bench tonight, guys, so everybody's gonna have to do motioning and seconding a lot more than normal. Any discussion, questions on it? Alright, we'll go ahead and vote to approve. So do I have a motion to approve? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We're gonna move on to the Traffic Speed Signage Bid Recommendations. Please.
Thank you. This was reviewed at work session. There are no changes to what we talked about there. The recommendation is for the board to approve a contract with Strain Electric for $112,850 for traffic speed signs.
Okay. Right, we have the bid recommendation for the Traffic Speed Signage as presented by Patrick Briggs. Can I have a motion to approve? Move that. By Mark. Support. By Andrew. Any questions for Mr. Briggs? Alright, all those in favor of supporting, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. It carries. Next up is the Summer Tax Resolution.
Thank you. Again, this is an annual resolution. Just a little bit of background on it. This allows the district to collect a 100% summer tax. In past years, it's been over twelve. The district used to collect a winter tax only, and now with this resolution, it allows the district to get essentially, get funding sooner. In our fiscal year, we, it's a July tax versus a December tax roll, so very important to our cash flow. We've done it for years and we ask the board to support it again this year.
Okay, we have a resolution in front of us for the Summer Tax Collection as presented by Patrick Briggs. Can I have a motion to approve?
So move.
By Dawn. Support. By Andrew. Questions for Mr. Briggs? I have a question. Otherwise, we're gonna get done too quick.
Yeah.
So, gotta mix this up now. I'll joke inside. Any, like, do most districts do it this way? Do you have any, yeah, like, percentage-wise, somebody do it this way?
It's more and more. I worked in, I worked in districts that have blended, that do a 50/50. But I, it'd be very anecdotal, but it's, I think we're getting to more than half of the districts do a 100% summer levy. It's certainly the recommendation from, we talked to the auditors about what the Michigan school business officials and the Michigan Superintendent's Association, MASA, recommend. They definitely recommend it's best. And once people adjust to it, it just becomes the way it's done. The reason, it never, I'd say, thirty years ago, even twenty years ago, it wasn't as important, and then the state got, had cash flow problems and they started, we used to get paid October through June, and then they split nine payments into ten, and they moved it back, one payment into August, and then they got in cash flow problems again, and they did it again. So the money we used to receive in nine payments, we now receive in eleven. So that's why it's become really critical to have that infusion of cash in the months when we're not getting the cash we should have for our budget.
Makes a lot of sense. Alright, we're gonna vote here. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The Insulin Litigation Recommendation.
So I'd like to recommend to the board to support a resolution to join litigation regarding monetary compensation for past damages incurred by inflated insulin costs, both for employees and for insurance carriers. Our insurance carriers are also joining the litigation. Most districts are, there's extremely, we covered this in the work session, but there are extreme increases in insulin that are, some employees had incurred. Joining this resolution, we'll work with many other districts through Michigan, through Trune, who we use through litigation, that's basically coming out of California. We've seen this with others, but the recommendation is for the resolution to join this litigation.
Okay. We have the recommendation and a resolution for insulin litigation as presented by Dr. Vanderjack. Do we have a motion to approve? By Mark.
One second.
By Greg. Questions or discussion on this one?
All just the money? Most of it will go back to the insurance carriers, which hopefully reduce rates. Some will go back to employees. We have to run through all the work of, we can't, we don't know who the employees are because of HIPAA, but through going through the litigation, they will be able to determine and get it back to them.
Good question.
If we went, I guess. I don't know. Yeah, I don't know.
Okay. On this one, we're gonna turn it over to Robin for a roll call notes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Duett?
Yes.
Mr. Chansky?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens? Yes. Mr. Paul?
Yes. It carries. Okay, last one up on our regular agenda here tonight is the Board Policy Revision as a First Reading.
We have one policy recommendation to add, the use of warrants for security purposes. We covered this in the work session, it's the only change to policy. And we'll tell you, we have many other policies to cover at our work session on Monday, but this is the only recommendation for the evening. It's a first reading.
Yeah, the board's had time to review the recommended changes to board policy 5771 as presented by Dr. Vanderjack. Do we have a motion to approve as a first reading?
So move.
By Dawn.
Support.
By Andrew. Discussion, questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote on it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Carries. Moving on to the report items.
So we're missing somebody at the end who's on a, apparently wants to go to college next year, is on a college visit, so I'm gonna ask Mr. Beal to give an update, but you wanna do it during your high school update?
Sure.
Okay, sounds good, and we'll go right to Park Elementary and Mrs. Stephan. Can you pass, Mrs. Taylor, can you pass your mic?
We are entering the Thanksgiving season and our CI categorical classes got to take a field trip yesterday, sorry, two days ago, and they traveled to Family Fair to gather groceries and supplies for a feast that they hosted yesterday. And yesterday, they hosted what they call a reverse inclusion opportunity, where the Gen Ed students that they, that they learned with in Gen Ed were invited to come to their categorical classroom and have a Thanksgiving feast for them. And it was really special. They did a craft, they all shared what they were thankful for, and then they got to celebrate with their feast, and their feast was like cheese and crackers and fruits and all the things that they had purchased at Family Fair. And Dr. Vanderjack and I both got to be a part of it, and it was just, it was really special.
Can you share the craft that they were making?
They made a turkey out of a ho-ho with candy corn on the top to make feathers and M&M's nose, eyeballs, and the whole time, Dr. Vanderjack was just looking for the extras so that he could stand in the background.
There was at least one student that wasn't, was eating most of it.
Her craft was being held like just out of reach. And then the other update I have for you is just that construction continues to be underway at Park. Our new spaces are all bricked in and you can actually walk through the space as it will be. You can walk through the teacher's lounge, the library, our two new categorical classrooms, bathrooms, hallways. It's, it's really great to walk through if you want a chance to look at it. Stop by and I'll walk you through. The plumbing, electrical, and duct work continues to be ongoing. They'll be doing external insulation and then finishing the brickwork in the next month or so, and then over the holiday break, they're going to take down our temporary wall, which, this is the second year we've had a temporary wall. It's on the opposite side now. They'll take down the temporary wall and then we'll have the full width of our hallway with just our new doorways. They'll still be drywalled because those rooms won't quite be ready for us to put it, but it's coming on.
Getting there. Mr. Eagle?
Sure, South Elementary. Just finished celebrating Veterans Day, and so just a comment to those who may be present or not, just really appreciate the sacrifices that are made, and it made me connect with a family at our school who just actually left us. Mom was in the military and was just, was able to finish up her tour and be home now. And just what they go through, you know, we see from the external, but they were up here in Hudsonville. Dad's job took him elsewhere and couldn't be present because of the way his job works. So they actually, Mom ended up in Hudsonville and said, can you just take my kid while I do this tour? And they were up here in Hudsonville, they happened to be at South, and just to watch all of that transpire, the kids drop into the school to try to make friends, and they're now Mom's home, and so they're out back to wherever they headed back to for home. So just really appreciate what our military families have to go through, what they give up for us, just even on a day-to-day, right? So just thank you to the veterans. Also, just thinking about this time of the year, I think about presents, not necessarily gifts, but just being present, and it's fun and chaotic to have the football players come over on Friday afternoons, but it does a lot of things for our teachers when those football players pick one of their former elementary teachers to lead them their reading Friday afternoon. That means a lot to our teachers, that not only did they teach the math and the reading, but that they made an impact on those kids. And to see them come back as high school kids and make an impact on our kids, they're giving autographs, they think they're the hottest thing in the world. I've seen Hudsonville jerseys signed by the offensive lineman, Dylan Stevens, and a few other things that are happening, but our presence, you know, wherever we are, it matters. And to see those guys come in and be leaders, throw a football around and engage in math activities is important. And so, again, it is chaotic, but it's a lot of fun. Then speaking of presents, just when you have little people come to your building for the first time, you never quite know what's on their mind. And if you're old, like I am, and you've been in the same building for a long time, you see family, like, child number one shows up, child number two shows up, child number three shows up, or number four, and they kind of just get tagged along, the last one. But it amazed me, the other day, this little girl is in kindergarten and she's had a couple sisters come through and she's sitting at the cafeteria table and talking to her friends and handing out sporks and spoons or whatever we do, and she looks at her, her little neighbor and next to her, she goes, I've known him for years! And she's pointing at me because she's been in the building a lot. So just even thinking about inviting our little people in when they're tagged along to volunteer, it makes a difference. Glad to be in a community where we can just be a part of that together and they feel comfortable coming in. I'm old enough that they know me for years.
We'll go to the middle school in North Riley with Mr. Bear.
I'm glad to know you too, Mr. Eagle. Thanks for always working with me.
For years.
I love for years, for years. Mark mentioned it is the season of things and it is the season of parent-teacher conferences for our middle schools. That starts next week on the 18th and the 20th, from 3:30 to 7:30 on Monday and then 3:30 to 7:00 on Wednesday. So, long nights for our people, but I think one of the things we've been trying to be intentional with is we know parent-teacher conference attendance goes down as you continue to go up in grades. And it's just a fact of, we know our kiddos are getting older and that parent involvement maybe kind of goes with it. But one thing we've been really intentional with is trying to take our students that really need that connection between parent and home. We've been significant in making phone calls before our, like, signouts go out. So, trying to get as many people signed up before it goes live to other parents. So, right now, we're at about 80%, I believe, filled for our attendance right now for parent-teacher conferences, which is just really cool. And it's intentional with people saying, "This is who I do need to talk to, to make those connections and continue to build over the year." Don't hold me to that percent, that was just what our counselor said the other day. So, I feel like I'm back. Second thing, I, this is my first time, like, delivering to the board, so I brought props. I didn't know if that was a thing, so. If you walk, if you walk the halls of Riley Street Middle School right now, you will hear the phrase, "It stinks." And it's not middle school BO, it's not any of that stuff. In our eighth grade science hallway right now, which is in the middle of the hallway, unfortunately, and if you have middle schoolers that are coming home, I am so shy, it does tend to waft with them. They have taken buckets of water from our nearby ponds, they've added vinegar, bacteria, anything that you can imagine, and it creates this absolute putrid smell that resonates in the eighth grade hallway. And it just stinks. I brought a filter and not one that's been used because I probably have to set it outside. So, this is one that's going to be used. It fell over in my car, so I hope this student doesn't get mad and the stuff's not the right water. But what they're doing is they've, we have 20 leaders coming in. I don't know if any of you have heard of that, but it's an organization that provides clean water to people in Rwanda. And the challenge that they're doing in engineering challenge in eighth grade is to try to filter water and to try to create. So, they're walking kids through the process of what filtration looks like, how to clean it. And literally, kids are like going like this as they're pouring this putrid water and trying to watch what comes out underneath. So, it's really cool. We've, yeah, killed a lot of plastic bottles, but it's just fun that our kids, it's, again, middle schoolers are unique and you got to keep them entertained any way you can. So, this has been a fun one. Our sixth grade teachers, our science, excuse me, our social studies and English people had a chance to pair up with the IST and they're working on a project coming up. I think some of you may remember the business project from years in the past where there was like a showcase and why is it a good place in Hudsonville to do business? They've actually changed the focus because they wanna try to broaden that a little bit more. And it's a really cool project that they're gonna pair up with. How do we solve disparity of resources? So, vocab for middle school students with disparity. But disparity of resources in our community and beyond, trying to find the idea of people who are willing to give and those that need, and trying to find a balance between how we connect organizations together. So, like, it's cool to talk about businesses and have that, but they sensed we could do more. And so, to find ways to connect people, which I know is what we always do during this time of Thanksgiving and Christmas, but trying to make that more beyond just the season of giving for that. So, that's Riley Street Middle School in a nutshell. Don't smell that.
I thought we were gonna pour what's in here.
Is this kombucha?
He's actually drinking that.
This is not the water I'm buying. We might want to get that on the chest. Too broad.
When you were sharing that, I have to say that it reminded me of Mr. Jordan, who you worked with, retired, our anatomy and physiology teacher who recently retired. When there would be the formaldehyde smell down the hallway, when there were animal dissections, he would always say, "It smells like learning." So, now, instead of it stinks, just, "It smells like learning."
You are all welcome to come.
Smells like learning.
Just to get a whip and walk out.
I'm gonna share Paxton's first. He sent an email, he apologized for being unable to attend, but being on the college visit, hopefully is worthwhile. So, he wanted to share out about our most recent blood drive hosted at school on October 25th, providing life-saving donations to those in our local community. It was busy all day long down there, so hopefully they reached the goal that they set for that day. Students have been working hard the past few months to finally put on their production analysis in Wonderland. So, our drama program ran that show Thursday night, Friday night, and Saturday matinee last weekend. The play was pretty fun. Alice in Wonderland's kind of a weird and fun one, so I got a chance to go and it was definitely worthwhile. Student council provided donuts to every student in the high school to lift their spirits before exams yesterday. So, it was donut exam day number one yesterday. We're at day two today and a half day tomorrow for our last exam of the trimester. He also wanted to mention some of our athletic events coming up. Our men's water polo team is participating in the state finals, which is being hosted right here at home in our pool, starting tomorrow. I think the first game might be at 11, but our team plays at 12:15. So, best of luck, boys. In a couple of weeks, our women's swim team will be representing Hudsonville at the state meet. And we still have football going on this weekend on Saturday and for the regional championship and gearing up for winter sports to start tryouts and getting that going. So, that was Paxton's shareout. I was gonna say more about exams, it being kind of crazy that we're already a third of the way done with the school year. But it being exam time is definitely, seems kind of heavy and important at the end of the trimester, which it is. But we're looking forward to the start of trimester two next week. The other thing to kind of piggyback on some of the season of giving, we have some of that started already with our school store students and some of our student council students working on Thanksgiving baskets to help families right here in our own community. They host a coin war in every classroom and there's kind of a competition that's getting started at the high school to try to raise money to that endeavor. And a lot of these are very much student-led and organized and they do the collecting and the delivery of all of these goods to help families right here in Hudson's community. I wasn't sure I was gonna share this, but I'm gonna do it because we usually keep this really light. But I think it's important for me to share to thank the board for anything that comes up about mental health. And maybe it's just because of the time change and the weather's starting to get dreary. But two years ago tonight, we lost a student named Luke Ballstead. It was, today is the anniversary of his death. And he was really one of my favorite students that I ever had the chance to work with. And many of you probably knew him and remember him for his involvement in student council. He was highly, highly involved, highly intelligent, just a fantastic young man. We still have a bench in his honor that we haven't placed anywhere outside of the hallway that it's been outside of Frau Wedge's hallway, and she kind of loves it there. But we actually had a couple of his classmates visit Frau Wedge and come check out that bench today. But I thought I'd be remiss if I didn't mention him and just thank the board for their any time, that their support. You've been very supportive of student mental health and supporting that. So, I just thought it'd be a nice way to remember Luke and mention that tonight. So, that's it from my high school. I appreciate you all and thank you.
Jordan?
Sorry. Just a quick update for myself. I do wanna, if the board has a chance to stop by the high school and visit the robotics area, which is not fully functioning, had a competition last weekend in the central gym. But the old office area has been converted to robotics and it's highly functioning. It's pretty, if you don't have time during the day, the best time to go is in the evening when they're working in there. It's pretty neat. Down the hall from that, about four doors down, is our new esports room. And I really encourage you to go see that. Also, I want to thank Mr. Beal, Mr. Briggs, and Mr. Seemstra, who's not here this evening, our instructional technology director, and the work that they did to get that room up and running for a group of students. It might be the best esports room in the state, if not. Definitely Hudsonville, could someone we have, but it is really, it's really neat in what they can do in that room. So, stop by if you have time. I'm sure Mr. Beal or one of the administrators would be more than happy to walk you down there and take a look. I would suggest either calling ahead and parking near that area, unless you want to get your steps in to go from the main office all the way down there. But they're located right by each other and it's really neat, I need to take a look at. I want to congratulate our architects, GMV, along with our 56 Building received recognition by Learning by Design, which is a national magazine, for the benchmark work that they did on the design of the 56 Building. There's a plaque that will be going up in the building that was just delivered on Tuesday to the building. I'll have the magazine for the board to take a look at on Monday evening. It has a whole layout of the building, it's pretty neat, it's nice to be recognized. I know we are in the running also for a national award for the field house design also, but this one just came through this week. And last but not least, Mr. Eagle, appreciate the comments and reiterate the comments about just the, what is better than something? That's it.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and do a roundtable here. Start down there with Mr. Davis.
Oh, Seth, thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to the community for electing me to remain on the board. We have an incredible community, we have great parents, we have incredible administrators and teachers. And it's really an honor to represent this community and I'm appreciative of everyone who's supported me throughout that process. So, thank you.
We recently had the dinner for the Hudsonville Education Foundation at Pinnacle. A lot of you were there, we had like 300 people there, outstanding dinner and program. And I think there's gonna be great things coming out of the foundation as there has been in the past couple of years. Also, I'd like to thank Dr. Vanderjack, Pat, and Ann for their involvement in making it easy for us to have deductions from the staff as far as to be able to contribute to the foundation. And I'd like to thank all the staff and the teachers who have taken the opportunity to contribute to the foundation. And it's a very good thing and it allows the foundation to give back even more. So, thank you very much.
No, I'll save myself for the end.
Congratulations, Andrew, looking forward to working with you. And Joy, it'll be good to get to know you, congratulations.
Congrats. You want to add anything? No, we've got plenty of time. I'll wrap up. Couple things that I wanted to hit on or already mentioned in Paxton's thing. We've got a few teams, our fall sports team's still playing this weekend. And I was thinking back to this summer where Mr. Farkas and Mr. Glass worked with our military liaisons at the school and did just an amazing kind of three-day course. And I can't remember, was it Casey who kind of spearheaded this? So, Casey Glass, Assistant AD, the guy's an eagle through and through. And he has wanted to really instill this sense of eagle pride, again, that he's kind of seen kind of maybe wane over the last few years. So, I was able to watch this program. We had well over 100 athletes show up and do a lot of team-building exercises with our military liaisons. And I know, you know, the football team was very well represented. Coach Sandy is just a big believer in the team and all of that. And I know our women's swim and dive team, Coach Cobus has really tried to instill a lot of these principles within the team this year. Now, talent always helps, but I can't help to think that some of these things that they worked on this summer and have continued to work out through the fall have led to, you know, the best season the football team has had in many years. Next weekend, the swim and dive team is sending more swimmers and divers than they have in several years as well. And just thinking about some of those principles, number one is positivity. The girls' swim team, they talk about being positive all the time. Swim can really stink. The morning practices really stink, even for the parents having to wake up extra early when the daughter wakes up that early. But staying positive, and that's something I think we should all try to focus on. It's really easy to get down, especially this time of year when it gets dark so early. But the other, another phrase that they've really tried to cling to is privilege. It's a privilege to be an eagle. It's a privilege, I think, for us to sit up here and represent our community. And we want our students to realize, hey, it's a privilege, it's a privilege to be a student athlete here. It's not just you get to do it because you get to do it. Coach Cobus is, I'm just talking to him all the time and he's like, "Nick, this is not to disparage any of my previous teams, but for the first time in a long time, I know each of my girls was swimming for the eagle on the cap." And I'm sure Coach Sandy would say that too, they're playing, the team is playing for each other, for their teammates, for that eagle. And I just want to, you know, just encourage us to continue to have that pride in who we are here in Hudsonville and realize it's, we're very fortunate to be in this community and represent it. So, just wanted to share those thoughts and I hope we, I hope we do well Saturday afternoon next weekend. And this week, water polo, we got some injuries. Water polo banged up, see what we can do. With that, we're done. Can I have a motion to approve? To adjourn, I should say.
Someone?
Move by Dawn.
Second.
Second by Greg. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move. We're done.